First Plan Commission meeting at the library, it's Tuesday, October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. I can have a roll call, please. Greg Cox.
Here.
Richard.
Here.
Any remarks?
Here.
Or go on.
Yeah.
Richard Will.
Here.
Pat Bernstein is traveling, will not be with us. I have a motion to excuse Pat Bernstein.
I move that we excuse that for a second. Who's taking notes?
Rich, you remember you were taking notes?
Uh, no.
You're supposed to be taking notes.
I'll take notes.
You'll take notes?
Yep.
Sarah's gonna do it for us, okay? Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you.
Okay.
Did you hear that, Rich?
Thank you.
Did everybody have a chance to review the minutes?
I did.
I sent it out.
Yes, I did.
There was a correction, I was at the meeting via Zoom.
Okay.
And I was not on here.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as modified?
I move to accept the minutes modifying the Eleanor.
Okay, we're gonna stop at this point and I'm gonna call and say.
I have a speech. So, this is a speech on behalf of Mayor Dinkler for the Planning Commission. On behalf of the mayor, I am here to reiterate the Planning Commission's requested contribution by the City Council to the draft comprehensive plan. It is the intention of the City Council after making modifications to the comprehensive plan for the Planning Commission to review in detail the recommended modifications. The Planning Commission is requested at this time to vet the changes, ensuring that any modifications made by the City Council did not change the intent of the chapters which were initiated by the Planning Commission in two thousand and eighteen. The overall goal is to have this last step review process and public engagement opportunity prior to the document being sent back to the City Council for finalization. After the council adopts the comprehensive plan, the Planning Commission would be requested to start the process of adopting codes that reflect the intent of the overall comprehensive plan. This reiteration is based on a need of the Public Planning Commission to understand the task at hand. So, it's very clear from the mayor because there has been quite a contention with the Planning Commission when it comes to the comprehensive plan that the intent from the City Council was to send this with their recommendations of changes for the Planning Commission to review those recommended changes. And if they approved, send it back to the council for finalization. If there is a list of things, say Chapter Three, that you have things that don't add up or we want to keep reviewing, then we send that back to council and we declare that we need to look at these things before we finally adopt this. The Planning Commission's task right now is to review the modifications that the council made to comprehensive plan. That's it.
Okay. How, I understand that. How about strikeout?
If you don't agree?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That would be on a separate list of, you know, to send back to the council. We don't agree with this, this is the reason why. I think Marlene has brought up valid points. These are the things, but it is not to write ordinance says change the code at this time. We cannot do those things until we have adopted this comprehensive plan. Because if we do, we're putting cart before the horse. So, if there are things that need to be looked at in detail, that's where the Planning Commission comes in, writes those down, sends it off to my back to council.
Is there anything off the table? Or anything that we, any problems that we have surfaced either through public comment or from PC comments or City Council comments that are forbidden for us to talk about?
I don't, there's nothing forbidden. If the Planning Commission needs these things a necessity to the comprehensive plan, that is the task. The task that the council needs you to conduct is to go through each chapter, look at those recommended changes, agree, disagree, write a synopsis on disagreement, approve it as the Planning Commission, and send it back to the City Council.
I win.
They expected it by the end of November.
So, my comment is, is that's a very different mission than the mission I thought that we were engaged in. And I have spent almost no effort to look at the comprehensive plan from that point of view. And if we have until November, then I think that we can effectively do that. And it makes sense that we don't start changing the zoning code until that the City Council has adopted it. But I've got to get my head wrapped around, okay, what are the exceptions? And so, in that comment, and then a second comment is that when I looked specifically at Chapter Three, there were some minor changes, but I didn't see anything that I thought needed a radical rework. But that's my opinion on Chapter Three, but I'll confess and say I've gotta kind of put back into Chapter Three again and see if I have any specific comments as the mayor has just outlined the mission. And I've got Chapter Three on my computer with some of my comments. Pull that up, but I want to give people a chance to.
I think the mayor's made it clear that the last statement that Sarah wrote that our second priority, I tend to call it our second phase, is to work on exactly what you and the rest of us have been focused on because that was the direction that the mayor gave Dan. And I didn't imagine that that meant that we were going to use our deliberations over the code as the feedback to the council prior to them adopting the line. I call it Phase Two because in municipal planning, you know, the first job of the Planning Commission is to propose a draft plan. We've done that. I don't remember when we gave it to the council and since it was a year and a half ago, which is about right. And personally, I think the, the direction that the mayor gave Dan was prudent and wise because she was anticipating the future. And basically said while the council is working on adopting the comp plan or reviewing it, the, the Planning Commission might as well start working on the hardest chapter in the comp plan, which again, I think was prudent on her part to say it's Chapter Three. Because she knew it was gonna be a lot of work. She didn't, I don't think, had any intent for us to deliver our recommendations about the remedies for what I call codifying Chapter Three before, to the City Council, before the City Council finally adopted, adopted and finalized the draft plan. Because that would be out of sync with the RCW. But nevertheless, eventually, we're gonna go through the same public participation process to get the code adopted. We make a recommendation to the City Council about all the work that we've been working on here after the plan's adopted. And the City Council once again goes through our recommendations about code just the same way they have done with the comp plan. They may make changes to it. That's their prerogative. They can either ask the Planning Commission to work more on a particular topic if they don't like our recommendation. But otherwise, in the best of all worlds, they accept our recommendations for code. They put it out for whatever they can. Sarah had explained to me before that they can adopt it through resolution or they can go through another formal planning or public participation thirty day review process. It's up to the council. Our job as the Planning Commission is to do the basic work. We did that when we produced the comp plan. We're in the process under the mayor's direction to work on implementing regulations, which includes the Ocean Shores municipal code. We did that again, I think, or did it because the mayor asked us to do it. But it has confounded the two different stages that we're in. We're in officially the review of this document. I have copies for everybody of the redline version of the comp plan from the City Council. Sarah has just said that our job right now, first and foremost, before the end of November, is to get our comments back to the City Council. Until today, I thought that deadline was tomorrow or Thursday. This is the first time I've heard that we had until the end of November. So, I was mistaken about the deadline because normally, agency comment is bound by the same public review standards that the public gets. If the mayor and the City Council are willing to give us till the end of November, big, big relief because I came to this meeting with the expectation, Dan told me, I told him that we were really gonna talk about the stuff that, that Richard had put together about the broad picture of, of Chapter Three or deal with these, with, with all of these comments. And until today, I thought we had to do that today. So, bottom line, I think the mayor's made it clear. Our job first and foremost is to go through this document just like what we have. We have been doing it, Rich, Richard or Rich has been giving us. I can't see that screen. Is there any way for us to look at that screen?
Richard can put it up on the.
You're, you're not missing much to look at there, Greg.
Oh, I can see him over there. So, Rich has consistently reviewed the City Council comments for every, for he's reviewed them for Chapter Three, for Chapter Four, and Chapter Five. I asked him to do that. And he's prepared presentations to us for the last couple of meetings about what's in here that we think we should tackle. And the first two things that we tackled, and unfortunately I lost my spreadsheets, but they're on our standard, what do you call it, foot chart notes, that's part of the package, where we record, those are ongoing, ongoing chronicle of what we have talked about. And right at the top of the list, unfortunately, it's not on that list on the wall. It says potential future draft modifications. And we had already discussed in Chapter Three what we wanted to do with the changes that the City Council made in the comp plan concerning dark skies. And we came to a consensus about what we wanted to do about it, and it is recorded in the, in the official record. Sarah recorded it. We did the same thing on the two thousand and twenty census. Those were the only two City Council comments in Chapter Three that the Planning Commission thought needed. Otherwise, the Planning Commission has already accepted, adopted Chapter Three comments from the City Council. We're done with that part of it.
Greg, can I interrupt just a second? We talked about it. We never had a vote that we all agreed.
Then let's have a vote.
Yeah.
Okay? I thought we, I thought we finished it. Because that's what, that's what went into the record.
Yeah, we need to talk about the changes we really want to get back to. And I say, you're not gonna do what's up there.
Okay, okay, fair enough, fair enough. Paramed zoning was another thing. And again, we have kept records, I actually have been remiss because I, I do read what you write. And under public comments, I need to add that there was a recommendation to eliminate the forty percent rule. And I forgot what the other one was, but somebody had either written in or they were on the Zoom and I didn't hear it, but I read it and somebody wants us to eliminate the forty percent rule. As far, as far as Ocean Shores Planning Commission comments, I think I have done my due diligence in terms of keeping a record of everything we've talked about and what follow through we need, including scheduling it on the subsequent meeting for follow up. So, let's get back to what is our job? By the end of November, if it takes that long.
No, because like you said, you've already gotten three, four, and five?
Right, and Rich will, will, and I had already prompted him, I don't know, a week ago, that I wanted to get his readout on Chapter Five. My take on, on this, on the, the City Council's comments is, is sort of like what Rich has been reporting. By and large, their, their editorial, by and large, I think the most extensive comments in here are under the utilities and what do you call it, Chapter Seven, utilities and public facilities. Obviously, Nick Bird spent a lot of time on the, on the comp plan and made a lot of neat substitute modifications. But personally, I consider Nick Bird to be the subject matter expert. And when I read him, I basically said, good enough for me. I'm not an expert in that, in, in the nuts and bolts of the engineering business. The point is, is that just like what Sarah just said, based on what we've done in Chapter Three and with references, like I again asked Rich about in, in Chapter Four and Five, we have been doing the right thing. And we have basically assembled a list of of what we're required to report or what we're being asked to report to the City Council. I had, I had put together, I had drafted the, the Planning Commission's response. I'll go ahead and pass that out to, it's just a draft. Nobody else has seen it except Dan. And it basically is a draft of what I propose we use to start on. You have, too, you have not met Marlene, you've probably not met Catherine Bowles. Remarkably, Catherine Bowles used to be the Planning Commissioner two decades ago. You don't get one. So, I'm not asking you to get in the weeds, don't get in the weeds. I just want you to know that the task that, that Sarah has and the mayor has laid out for us is not as daunting as it sounds. But we have technically not gone through the entire redline version. And I say redline, meaning that's the version. These are the recorded redline changes that the City Council proposed be incorporated into the draft that went out public. So, all the proposed changes that the City Council made, the redlines went away. The document that's out for public review right now is the Planning Commission's original proposal with the modifications that the City Council made without any notation that those changes were made. So, the, the, the public doesn't know that what they're reading is really a composite of both the Planning Commission and the City Council. And that's perfectly appropriate. That's the process, so.
Hey Greg, hey Greg, can you hear me? I've got a question for you, Greg. On Chapter Three, you mentioned that we had some notes regarding Doc, Dark Skies and some other ones. You, you know, again, our, our job was to read what City Council threw back at us. And we did, you know, I made notes on Three, Four, and Five that pretty much everything was reasonable. I appreciate they took some things out. Why would we go back again and say, well, I know you said you wanted to take these out, but we really, really, really want you to put them back in again? Why do we think we're gonna get a different response? Why would we do that?
Well, so far, we haven't done that. Are you talking about dark skies in particular?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. They, they threw out dark skies and you had notes on something else that I don't recall, but.
It's not getting into the weeds right now. But, and, and I don't mean to, to, to cut you off, Rich, but just like Sarah said, our job is simply to itemize issues at this point. It would be nice, personally, I think, if the Planning Commission, given all the work that we've gone through, could actually offer solutions like we did with dark skies, like we did with the two thousand and twenty census comment. But as we've learned, going through the details of following the mayor's instructions to come up with code, again, second phase of the whole process, it's, it's a little bit more meaty and deliberative than, you know, we thought. I mean, look at the amount of time that we're working on the code, which is probably appropriate. But in terms of doing our first job with the draft, with the, the plan that's out there, all we need to do is go through and say, we have a problem with what the City Council did. That's all we gotta do.
And I think for clarity's sake, because it's kind of been all over where you've worked on the code or you've worked on this. I think for clarity's sake, it is go from one to nine. Chapter One, yes or no, vote on it. Chapter Two, yes or no, vote on it. Chapter Three, yes or no, vote on it. Write your itemization, say as you would like them, and go back and review them. Like, that's, that's where I think the, you have the ability to go a lot farther, but we're getting lost in doing the code and things like that. And that's, that's the delay here.
Right on. Absolutely. I hope everybody heard what Sarah just said.
And I think we can get through that in the next meeting if we all just go through the red lines on those nine chapters.
That's where I'm at. I think we can get this done in the next two meetings.
And almost set aside what you, you know, what you've talked about, like Rich has already made cognitive presentations of what he's done in Three, Four, and Five. Set that aside, go Chapter One, Chapter Two, Chapter Three, Chapter Four, and that's it.
So, to, to kind of bring this full circle, what, Rick, or I asked Dan last night how he wanted to run this meeting. And I said that a recommendation was that we either review Richard's stuff that he's got on the wall or that we focus on what I thought prior to the day we had to submit before Thursday. So, I was sort of sweating bullets. That's why I gave you, that's why I distributed this draft to you because it does itemize, I think, virtually everything that we have tried to tackle. And as far as I can tell, that pretty much handles the most difficult chapters in this comp, in this comp planning. Give Marshall a copy there and give him a copy. I'll get you one in just a minute.
Okay, that's right.
And let's get through this so that we don't get confused about what we're doing. Let's, let's do our job, handle the first page and get our, go through this entire document. Again, I think, I really think we have handled a lion's share of it just because Three, Four, and Five are the most important chapters in this document. And I don't mean to dismiss that. I have a couple of things here that doesn't have, can't believe that. This doesn't have a table of contents. But the rest of the chapters, like I said, with the exception of utilities and public facilities, which is really needy in terms of comments, the rest of the chapters in this book basically came from other, or other sources. We've already, the environmental chapter, for example, is already done. It's already been approved by Department of Ecology. And if you'll notice, the City Council didn't make a single comment about it, I don't think. So, likewise, recreation and parks, which is the last chapter, I think. Recreation and parks has never given us their dead gum direction that was supposed to be incorporated in it. And yet, that's sort of wasn't even our prerogative to do that. That was a city department that was supposed to do that. And it didn't end up in the, in the draft. It's still blank.
So, Parks and Rec, their, their portion of this comp plan was approved more than a year ago.
You're right. It says right there, it was adopted by reference and declared annulled. So, it's no longer open for public comment?
No.
Exactly. So, I have a couple of other comments. My first question, Sarah, is, is I have amassed a lot of documents around this whole comp plan. But to my knowledge, I don't have a clean word document with the, with the City Council's comments on it. Can you email me a word copy? Okay.
I can email them.
What?
Talking about this.
I have a PDF copy, but I can't, I can't make, it's harder to make comments on a PDF copy than using a Word copy at my level of, of computer skills. So, if you have a Word copy, then it'll be your copy.
No, yours is the PDF.
Yeah, and I would appreciate if I can, I can deal with a PDF, but it's easier with Word. So, I can do a Word copy. And the next thing I'd like to say is, is as I said earlier in this meeting, this is kind of a new ballgame for me. And it makes total sense, but I call it the flat footage. And I agree with both Greg and Richard Hartman. I think we can probably complete this by the next meeting. But what I would very much like is an opportunity to take that fresh document and add my comments to it. And as we go through the next meeting and, and, and as Greg or Mitch have pointed out, it should be pretty easy to do and say, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. When I make my comments on that document, it will change the way that I appear in the public. We really focus tightly on this as a city commissioner and. So, I'm hoping that we do not go through a vote today on accepting any of the chapters that we have before us. But I want to review the notes that Greg just gave us. They synthesized what Rich has already done. And then I want to just read through them and see my own comments, make my own comments if I can bring back at the next meeting.
Well, that's true. We all need to do that. Not only have the chapters, they haven't had the opportunity to read.
Right.
We need to all read all chapters, the, the red lines and hold it over till next meeting. We could probably even put it up there.
Right.
In my line of, and get it done.
Get it done. Exactly right. So, now I've got some other things to say, but I want to give other people a chance.
Well, let's deal with it. You just proposed that we put off this entire job until the next meeting because you want to have a chance to read it. I don't think that's unreasonable. Dan pretty much said the same thing. So, if that's where you all are at and you want to take the redline draft home and do exactly what Richard just said, you want to take the draft response that I prepared with you and redline and snort out of it. It won't hurt my feelings. Again, I prepared this draft because I thought the deadline was Thursday. So, you're basically recommending that today we cable this whole discussion?
No, I think that there's things that we can discuss, but I don't, I'm not prepared to take a vote on, on, on yes, no, yes, no, yes, no till after I have an opportunity to go through and reexamine. When I first got the PDF document, I read through it and said, oh, you know, this makes sense. Just maybe it doesn't make as much sense. But I didn't write down comments based on the criteria as I understand it in today's. based on the criteria as I understand it in today's meeting.
Okay, so the only qualification I would like to recommend to that proposal is that just like Rich has done for us in every preceding meeting, he basically does exactly what we are saying we need to do for the whole document. He's done that for chapter three, he's done that for chapter four, he's done that for chapter five. Even though he didn't give a readout on chapter five, I asked him to do that today. And if you remember back when, uh, we all agreed on the process that we were going to use as we got through all of this, we were going to deal with things by exception. Those were not hollow words. We, by, that means that we would come to the meetings prepared because we've done our homework. And we come in and we basically do what Sarah just said and say, anybody got any comments on the city council's comments on chapter one? Not hearing any, it's adopted. Likewise, and we've already done this with chapter three, and we only came up with two things that we thought we needed to, to, to deliberate on. And we actually, at least went to the trouble to get a ver, a non-formal consensus on what we thought would be the remedy. And those are in the official record that Sarah recorded. So you need to go back to, oh goodness gracious, um, more than two meetings ago, but, uh, cause Dan and I didn't start this. Yeah, I guess it was, uh, the fourteenth of, of September. So I think those comments, I think we dealt with those comments on the fourteenth of September. So it would be in that official record.
I have another question and, and.
Can I finish? So, um, that's the only thing that I'm recommending. On top of, of your proposal is for, let's take this, let's all take this home, read it, come back to the next meeting, prepare, do exactly what Sarah said and go through it, chapter by chapter, and itemize any, we either adopt it, meaning there's nothing, no comment, or we modify it like we did with dark skies and, um, the comments on twenty twenty census. Or we flat out reject it and push back and say, no, we don't agree with striking that particular statement. And say why with cause. You can't just say it that we reject it. You gotta tell the, the council why. So those are the rules that I propose that we use to get through this, this clarification of the process that Mayor and Sarah brought. Can we get a, I, do you have, we do have a chance for discussion?
I, I think what you're proposing is clear, uh, and I, I think it's appropriate. Uh, um, and I don't, if we need to take a vote on that, that, that's what the mission is. That's, that's her. Sarah just read the mayor's mission statement. Uh, so now I just need time to go back through. But I think that there's other productive ways we can use the rest of this meeting.
I could say it was not there yet, but let's just deal with this.
So, so that's what I'm saying.
So I make a motion.
Talking for at least thirty minutes and nobody else has had an opportunity to say anything. I would like somebody else to have an opportunity to speak up. And so anybody else got any comments? And when everybody else has reached their comments, then I have a couple of, of ideas that I would like or suggestions I would like to, to put out there on the, on, on the floor.
Hey, Richard, I've got a question. Since we, since we've been discussing chapter three, four and five for a month or so, have we all read chapters three, four and five? And are we ready to move forward with those three chapters?
I have, I have read those, but those chapters aren't in the surface of my mind right now, so I'm not prepared to discuss those because.
Okay.
Not at this meeting. With that.
Okay.
What, what I would like from you, Rich, is, is, is if, does, the question I was going to ask earlier is, does, does this piece of paper that, that, that Greg gave us, does it capture all of the things that Rich has captured?
Oh, yeah, but he hasn't seen this because he can't get it where it's at. So he has not seen the draft response that I put together for the PC to deliver to the city council because I thought it was due on Thursday.
Got it. But Rich, what I would like from you is that you can email to Dan, to distribute to the rest of us, uh, uh, the, 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 the list of comments that you have compiled just so I can cross check and make sure that I've captured all of the things that you have already captured.
I've already done that in the meetings and I've said that I can personally accept everything the city council uh, put forward without any problems. The things that I feel they've put forward are reasonable. Uh, I consider them our boss. They have lined out a lot of black skies points. That's their choice. Uh, I, I'm ready to move forward with three, four and five. The, the things that they put in there are uh, that they aren't hard to swallow for me. So there's nothing for me to say other than I approve of those three chapters the way city council sent them back, but that's me.
And, and, and I would just like to, an opportunity to reread those and, and, and have that on the surface of my mind.
Um, I, I like Rich's plan going forward and I agree with Richard. I, because I've missed so many meetings, I would like the opportunity to go through this one more time.
Yeah, and I have huge respect for, for everybody here and Rich. But just Rich saying he has no disagreement doesn't mean a recipe.
I, I agree completely.
Yeah, that's why I'd like the opportunity.
And, and even chapter three.
Yeah.
Because if we've got some questions about dark skies, we all need to really read what was taken out or what we might want to recommend and put back in. So we need to do it from an educated point of view. And so I think we, we've kind of just got to take this until we can all get out of speed.
I'm, I'm, it's a huge relief to me when, when Sarah said we got till the end of November because again, I was freaking out because I thought all of a sudden we gotta get this in by Thursday.
Well, you really have the opportunity to even complete it your first meeting in November if you all have this time to read and, you know, know that that's what you're coming here to do, bring your exceptions, bring your recommendations, one, two, three, oh, eight, nine.
I agree with you totally.
The more time we give council, the, the happier they will be. And I know they want this done by the end of the year.
I'm just not ready to back on it today. I can't be ready to back on it at the next meeting.
So I am, uh, because of, there's been, because of what Dan said earlier about us not going through the process or wondering whether we went through the process on dark skies and twenty twenty census, then I am going to, uh, make a motion that we all agree that we're going to go over the red line version of the, uh, comprehensive plan. We're going to review, uh, the draft report to the city council regarding the comp plan. And we're going to come to the next meeting, which is November, November twelfth, right? No.
Nine.
Right. November ninth, uh, and deal with literally chapter one through chapter eight. Uh, we don't have to deal with eight because this person, right? Chapters one through seven, by exception. I'll get a second.
Second.
I want a favor.
Any?
Hi.
Aye. Move the vote.
I, I think that I'd like to note the, the document that you handed out today that you said you hadn't shared yet. Um, I won't be here moving forward, so this is just a thought. This, uh, third page, you have potential draft revisions. I think that's what you really should be having the council after the next meeting. That's the list of the revisions, maybe even note the item and the page number. And that's all they need.
Well, that's true, but that's not the whole list of issues that we have stumbled upon.
So that would be fine, but I think that the rest of this is a little bit much at the moment when all they really want are those lists of revision or questions or concerns that we have.
Well, I will take the issue with that and say that literally everything on these two pages, we have spent an enormous amount of time talking about. We've had not resolved. And, um, so based on Sarah's direction or Mayor's direction through Sarah, uh, that's why I asked the question, is there anything off the table that we can't tell the city council about, um, items that we're struggling with?
Well, I agree with that. And there's a big issue with this land use map.
Absolutely.
And the potential for rezoning.
Absolutely.
And I feel like we've talked about this in three different ways, making a real conclusion about which decisions being made on any of those three layers.
Absolutely.
And I don't, that makes me so uncomfortable.
We, I wanna, I'm glad you brought it up, Tony. I don't, our charge, as I understand it, is to itemize the problems or itemize the issues or itemize, I mean, basically the same kind of stuff that's on the wall charts there. Not necessarily, even though I personally think it's desirable, but not necessarily offer solutions to the problem.
Right.
Because the plan, you have to put this into the context of what's going on here. The city council, holding this up, the city council wants to adopt and finalize this document as they should. Just because we. Just wait a minute. I have a fish to fry. There are a lot of fish to fry, but we don't have to solve all those problems in order for the city council to approve them.
This is the fifth iteration that you have said basically the same thing. And so I think we've all got it. We're going to come back at the next meeting and we're going to say, yes, no, yes, no, go right down the line of all of the red light irons in here. We've all got that now. And, and we took the vote out and we all agreed to that. So, so, uh, if, with the, with the, 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 the rest of the commission's permission, uh, I would like to address what Tony was just talking about, uh, and, and if, if the rest of the commission likes to, to learn what I have, to hear what I have learned, some epiphanies that I've had, uh, I would like to share them.
No, not right now.
No.
So we're going to have a sixth iteration.
Can I ask a question? Um, where in this document is the land use map and has this?
It is, it is not in this document.
It's a, it's an attachment that went, it's part of the, it is part of the package. It's, it's.
If, if you go online.
That's fine, but has the city council approved this?
Yes.
Yes.
As, as it stands right here?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they haven't approved it. They, they forwarded it.
They've accepted it.
And forwarded as a draft.
Yeah.
For public review and agency review. The public review period ends on Thursday. As an agency, I guess we get until the end of November to offer our comments. So I'm not trying to cut, cut you short, Tony. I'm trying to use what you brought up as an illustration that we're, what you just talked about, about multifamily to single family is part of phase two. It has to do.
I don't, see, I don't see it that way. We have a land use map that wants to create multi-family only in an area where there's quite a few single family houses now through the pyramid zoning structure.
But it is contrary to what the, the planning commission put together.
And that's what I'm saying. So that would be one of the items on the list that we send the city council of potential revision.
It is. It's that there is item number two on the front page.
Okay, but I don't see how we can talk about potentially zoning anything unless we know that those orange areas are not actually going to be orange.
We don't at this point. We haven't resolved it. We're just given the planning or the city council a heads up that there's an issue with that and that the planning commission still has to deliberate the resolution of that in phase two. We're not, we're not throwing it away.
Okay, so has everyone collectively agreed that's the step, that's the path that we're taking forward?
That's what the mayor just asked us to do.
I'm talking about the specific idea of moving those land use elements that were coded to be multi-family back to single family.
We haven't resolved it.
I think that that's off the table. My understanding.
No, it's not off the table. It's not off the table. It just, I, and it is still an item for discussion under phase two.
Okay, I, okay.
Okay?
I accept that.
It's not an item for discussion right now.
Why is it not? Because it's part of the document that we're supposed to be commenting on. That is an attachment to this document. We are making comments on that attachment.
I think you haven't had time to read it.
I see that and note those things in here. So all I'm saying is, how can we move forward with rezoning areas if we don't know if they're going to be multi-family or single family?
Well, we're not there yet. We are simply saying that there's an issue with it. And that in phase two.
We'll be doing the reason.
We're going to deliberate the resolution of that issue along with pyramid zoning. Um, the fact that that map is wrong about, um, neighborhood commercial. Uh, I mean, the entire list of things you, I welcome you all to come up with something that's not on this list.
This is really just on the back foot and it's all right now.
We're just saying this is phase two stuff. I keep saying phase, this is phase one. Let's get through Mike Anthony. I'm sorry we're worried about. Phase one is our top priority.
Okay.
Phase two is to get back to what the mayor asked Dan to make our priority, which is codifying this document. Part of codifying this document involves dealing with the multi-family to single family. It involves pyramid zoning and involves, um, B three. Uh, it involves a whole lot of things. It involves what, what Richard is here to present to us about how do we codify, uh, the gateway? How do we codify the south end development zone? That's what Richard came prepared to talk about today.
Because that's what we thought until recently. Now we realize that certain things have to be increased, then we get.
Right. So we're just working ahead. We're just, we made an agreement that we're going to table doing this today, even though we could work through the draft. But I'm okay with that. I think everybody needs to read it and satisfy themselves. We said we will do that starting at the next meeting and we'll finish it up by the twenty third, by the end of November. And in the meantime, we've got an hour plus left in today's agenda. Well, let me finish because, well, let's just say in the meantime, let's take advantage of the hour plus that we've got left over and let's see, let's go to, back to phase two, which has to do with creating the implementing regulations for the draft, even though we all realize the draft's not done. Do you see the, the, the disconnect there? We're working on a draft that could change. But I don't think it's going to change that dramatically that it would make our work on the, on phase two um, obsolete or irrelevant. Eventually, we're going to work on what Richard brought us today in phase two.
Okay, great. And I, sure, Jeff. I disagree with going backwards like that. And I, I tend to side with Tony on this. That map is part of the problem.
Yeah, it is. It's part of the draft.
So we all need to agree that that, that map is what we really want.
No, I don't, okay, I don't agree with that. We just need to say what's wrong with that map. So all we have to do is say what's wrong with that map. We don't have to fix it.
That's what I was saying.
Okay, listen, okay.
That map would essentially have exceptions of its own.
Yeah.
Say that again.
That map will essentially be distributed, the council with exceptions of its own, just like the chapter.
That map, the council already has that map. And my last point is question, if you go online to, to, to a file pro and it's under the, uh, planning commission and it's the twenty nineteen land use map. Uh, and I didn't understand that this is the active map until two days ago. Uh, so this is the map that the city council has, and this is the map that the city council has, has tentatively approved. And what I would like to spend some time doing to address specifically Tony's issue is I have learned a lot about that map. And what I would like to spend some time doing to address specifically Tony's issue is I have learned a lot about that map. And, and, and his intention, and I would like to share what I have learned. Because it goes directly to how our foot, we may want to change on this map, if we don't understand the map. Then, then we can't make a deliberate change, so with the planning commission's commission, I want to share a little bit about what I've learned.
Great, you have, you have your agenda too, you still have to take public comment, you guys have been in the session for an hour now. Public comment, should come right after this speech.
Okay, let's, let's switch to public comment.
Hi, sir. Not really, I'm a little confused now. Uh but, and my, my notes weren't exactly in good shape to begin with, but. Um I guess we have this, the single moderate pie. I still have, I still have heartburn over the fact that we can put. Five plexes and six plexes on, that's now people have lots. I still have serious heartburn about that, and I think that they could do it. I think with the lot size, the forty percent rule is only the structure, the dwelling structure. That it's not the forty percent, it's not intermediate surface, it's just the dwellings that were started. In seventeen fifty-two ten, and so they can put. You know, let's say they, they uh create six hundred square foot apartments. They can put two six hundred square foot apartments on the first floor and go up three floors, and then we have six apartments. And they could set that back in the bedroom lot and pave the whole front and they got apartment payment here. So I think it is potentially possible to put a six plex on what is now zone S R two. And so I still have a heartache with there not being something between. Something that's maybe R one through R four. And that five plexes and six plexes are like medium high or something like that. Here's the other thing with five plexes and six plexes, is that where we set, that's where we set homeless shelters to go. And now if you're. M- merging by in with two through four. It says we can put homeless shelters anywhere that's currently in our two, three, or four block. So I'm, I'm having heartache there, um I don't know, uh like I said, the only thing I can suggest is that there's something between moderate and high. And it's where the five plexes and six plexes and rural, rural, whatever can go.
Marlene, what, what did you, where did you say homeless?
The, the forty percent for dwelling structures.
No, no, what, what did you, I heard that part, what did it say about the homeless, where, where, where did the city council say they could go?
R five, see, R five, seventy-nine, and, and all the commercial.
R five through, uh, Arlo?
R five and then R seven, eight, nine. And all three commercial. Because I'm still not convinced you're gonna get your R ones in these zones.
Okay, I've heard you say that before, but recorded it here, I think it's in the flip chart notes.
And one of the.
Yes, it's still, it's in the flip chart notes from the previous.
Um one of the other things is that we're staying, and with the pyramid zoning, that these are going to remain multifamily. But we're concerned that they won't be affordable housing because rents need to be like a thousand dollars a month or something like that. Is there some reason that these multi-plexes can't go up and be subsidized housing?
No, I don't, in fact, uh.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is a question answer, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um I just wondered if there was, you know, if, if any one of these could go in as subsidized housing, so. We don't have the concern that we can't build any affordable housing if it can be subsidized.
Joe, is the point that we need to deal with subsidization?
I know, I'm, I'm saying that there's assumptions that we're not gonna get any multifamily deals because the rent would be so high. Might not be, and then that was in today's document somewhere. That, that, that rent would be too high for the investors, the investors would have to get a thousand dollars a month in order for it to, for a multifamily to pay for itself. I'm not sure where that number came from. But there was some, some question or discussion last time about affordable housing versus taking those multifamily lots away. And I don't know where subsidized housing falls into the whole format, I guess.
So, that's what I'm trying to report, do you, is that, do you want us to address subsidized housing?
Well, I, I guess my question is, do we, I, I don't know.
Well, the plan does, but nevertheless, what, what you won't need to write down, because I'm having a hard time figuring out what the issue.
Should, you know, um I guess. Do you want to, do you want to consider subsidized housing in your, in your definitions or whatever or not?
So, Marlene, although dialogue back and forth is probably not what we're setting. But I read through what you specifically referred to as the homeless, and I think it's ten nineteen or, or whatever it is, the homeless that was just adopted. Uh and I read through that twice yesterday and, and. I don't remember where I saw that it's restricted to, to, to the uh, are, are the multiplex, the R five. The five and six multiplex and, and the, the high density.
They um approved it as amended.
Uh I understand that, but I read the amendment and I didn't see that, would you take the time to get home to highlight that for me and assist me so that I can get it into my head? Uh because, I believe.
I don't know that they wrote it down.
So where did you get it?
As, are you saying it's been codified already?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, sorry.
Do you have any public comments?
Anne Reese, do you have a public comment? Patrick Hayes, do you have a public comment?
No, I don't.
Catherine Spring, do you have a public comment?
I do not.
Alex Suarez, do you have a public comment?
No, I don't.
Okay, we're gonna have a public comment. Um. Are we going back to the business? Yes, I, I'd like to make a. Informal comment, um this is um. Tony's last meeting and um. I have invited her and anybody else that wants to come to Hoyt Hut to. Celebrate her, so before we end, I just want to extend that invitation that. Unless she's mad at me because of.
Of course not, no.
But.
Um I hate to abuse, but I actually have an appointment right after the meeting.
I guess that's not gonna happen, so at any rate, before the end of the meeting, I think we should all give you a salute and thank you for your dedication.
Thank you very much.
You have never disappointed.
I think it might be prudent to go through the land use stat.
Perfect, and, and so uh sir, if you'd let me share a screen that I can put uh some of this up so that the Zoom participants can also see. So.
Because if you go online, you get the, you get the land use map online.
Then you push here, Richard, on right, share.
I, I thought I just took that swing share, I thought I just did that.
Where it says share in that.
Oh, there, oh, I see. There, so. I have spent a fair amount of time examining this land use map and, and the associated chapter three information. Uh and one of the things I did that I found useful is uh, we've talked a lot about the said zones, I'm gonna start there. Uh I think the two main areas that I think bears better understanding from all of this is what is the said zone, where is the said zone? And what's the gateway corridor, and so what I've done down here, let me blow this up just a little bit higher, a little bit bigger. What I've done down here is uh. So this area here is outlined in whatever color this is, pink, this is my understanding of approximately the boundaries of the said zone. And what's the name of it? This, this is the approximate boundaries, and, and that's, that's open to discussion, but it's a starting place. The land use map describes a commercial residential zone. And it also describes a neighborhood commercial zone. The neighborhood commercial zone, there is no place on the map that, that neighborhood commercial has been defined. But I found some interesting things when I looked at this map and I also looked at the county P I S map. And so, so this, all of these arrows, these, these are just a layer, and what these layers do is. Uh one of the comments that we've heard repeatedly is that I can't know for sure what this color code means down here. Uh and using software, I picked up this color and said, where else is this color at? And it's down here, so what I've done is drawn those lines, and if you follow the lines, you know, then, then it's easier to see just where those zones are. So there's some interesting things that I discovered on this map. And the first I would like to point out is that down here in the proposed said zone. Put this up there. There are, there are, are basically three undeveloped areas. The first one is this big tract right here, this is tract A, this is owned by the Hoyt Timber and Land Company. The Marina here is also owned by the, we have Timberland Company, well, we're, we're off, I, I, yeah, turn off, we're off Timberland Company. This area is about fourteen point nine acres, this area is twenty-one acres. And this area up here is uh seven point two acres, and this is the property north of the Marina. And here's the, the, the Brookdale Senior Center right up here, so, so now there's some. There's some discussion about where exactly this east barrier is, is, you know, is it over here? Uh is it over here and includes these multifamily dwellings? And that's not on the table, I just wanna give some idea of, 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 uh, of, of just how this land is currently structured. If you look at a satellite map of this area, you'll see that most, all of this area here is already built out, it's built out for somewhere. Marshall, correct me, the problem is from forty to sixty percent, and the majority of that build out is actually storage sheds. Uh now, how does that impact, well, if we're gonna put in a neighborhood center. Is somebody gonna tear down a profitable storage shed to put up a potential neighborhood center? And, and I don't know the answer to that, and that's not our, that's, that's not, not our wheelhouse. It makes sense that this area, which is undeveloped, could turn into neighborhood centers, but again, that's not our decision. It makes some sense to me, although neighborhood center is not defined, defined in the zoning code. If like B three, if we defined it, and then if a developer wanted to develop a neighborhood center. The zoning language is already there. Uh you know, and that's, that's, that's a future discussion, it's, it's just a, a, a thought process. So, so this land is all Marina. And, and who knows what's gonna happen, this land, like I said, is not timber and land. Uh uh and again, who knows what's gonna happen and, and, but it's kind of available for a neighborhood center type of concept. Does that make sense? Does anybody have any questions about this?
Well, I got a little mixed up when you. When you said that. I think, well, you tell me if I'm wrong, but you, you basically said that. If somebody wanted to do a plan development, they could do it there.
Correct.
Without us prescribing that it's planned development.
That's kind of the gist of it, I think, and, and one of the questions, and, and I don't know the answer to that, that if the city changes a zone. Does the city have to go through the rezone process and have a public hearing and have a, uh, have the hearing examiner, uh, and Marshall, do you know the answer to that?
I don't, but I, I don't see where it wouldn't happen without a lot of public comment.
Exactly, hold on, because, because one of the other things that I found interesting is this area right here. This, this area right here, this is ten acres and it is also zoned, let me, let me just shrink the map so we can see. This area is also zoned, not also zoned, but it is, it is identified as, as a commercial residential. Did I follow that line down there?
Mobile home manufacturer.
No, this area up here is mobile home manufacturer, I'm talking about this, this dark. And Rich, I don't know if you don't recognize, that's your ten acres.
Yeah, I know, so full disclosure, that's mine, and it's zoned a number of different ways that includes uh, uh motorhomes and trailers and such as well, it's got two designations.
But it is proposed to be a, a commercial residential. And, and I don't know what commercial residential means. Um, um, I can make some guesses, and I think that commercial residential uh perhaps fits best into an existing B three language. Kind of be. Well. It's so ambiguous that I think that that's part of, of your stage two, is that we examine the codes and say just exactly what do these. Uh 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 zone designations, exactly how are they worded? Uh I found it interesting that all of this is, all of this, what is this, pink, uh, or light purple, whatever this color here is. You know, this is all the proposed uh gateway corridor, and right smack in the middle here is, is, is this uh service professional office. And. In the comp plan, what it says in the service professional office uh to synthesize is that the less visually desirable buildings like auto repair. And, and medical offices uh and, and those things would go off onto this, this uh, uh, a service professional. And is that what we really want to do? As I drive through other towns, I see medical office on the main drag, I see oil changes and auto repair. And so do we really want to, to uh move those businesses off of Point Brown? And on to, and not, uh, on to uh uh Seahorse and Menard? Uh and is there an advantage to the city and is there an advantage to those business owners to move them off of Point Brown? And, and I don't know, but I, when I finally understood that that was what was going on, I found it interesting. The other thing I find interesting is if you look at this area right here, this is actually. Oh, get the right way, this is, this is, uh, the convention center should be kind of right there. And up here is the, the uh, the, the playhouse of the, the little floating boats and, and. That's the, the park track is over, over here. This area north of that Playtime Family Fun is actually all wetlands. And with the city owning the wetlands, bang, uh, uh, this area could be mitigated and, and become something besides wetlands, but. How usable is this area for our purposes right now? And I just wanna bring attention to. Is, is this area through here, this is somewhere down, right, right down here should be the existing uh, uh, city, city hall office buildings. Uh, you know, so, so. Is this the land use that, that, that the city or the planning commission or the city council really wants to call a, a service professional? Uh and, and, and what's the difference between that and the other land use designations uh that we see down here? So I found those things interesting, another thing I just wanna point out real quick, I'm gonna go back to this other, other map. Let me just one second here, if I go back to this map, I just discovered this accidentally, if you click on this little tag over here to, to the left. And click on layers, you can turn on and off. The, the parcel octagons, and you can also turn on or off the, the street labels.
Cool.
And, and this is a much easier map to understand than one's filled up with all the polygons and street labels.
Where did you get this?
This, this is, this is the existing twenty nineteen PDF, and it's the only map PDF that has this back feature activated.
So how did you get it digitized this way?
It's, it's, it's a copy of the PDF, this is the, 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 a copy of the city's PDF file. And, and they have four PDF maps available on there. Uh, uh, they have the old, they have the existing zoning map, they have this land use map. Uh, uh, someplace I got the, the four zones that we were talking about downgrading from multi to single family. That's also a PDF file, but of those four files, this is the only one that has these layers activated. And the software that I'm using to see those layers is Acrobat, uh, Acrobat, Acrobat Reader. And, and so Acrobat Reader is free to, to anybody who wants to download it. Uh and I just found this an, an easier way to, to understand the colors, because without all of that other business on there. This starts to make more sense. Because without all of that other business on there, this starts to make more sense. So, so those are some things that I wanted to share about land use. Uh, and, and as Tony has pointed out, what do these actually mean? And I think that that's a future discussion. Uh, I created a document. Uh, where, where I took the existing, um. Comp plan narrative and fit it as best as I could under each of these different, uh, land use categories. And then underneath that, I also took the most, the zoning code narrative that most. Uh, appropriately fit into the comp plan narrative. Uh, to be able to say, okay, this is potentially the code that we could edit to. Help define these, but if these zones aren't defined, I don't know how we can actually lose them.
I think if I made a comp plan.
They vary very loosely.
But are they all addressed in the comp plan?
Yes, kindly.
Yeah, okay.
They are, and I, I think that to be.
Yes, directly related to those, to this.
Yes. And, and go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's, no, but why I think, what Richard's trying to say is they may be in there. But we might even enhance them so everybody can understand.
So we can understand it, exactly.
Yeah.
And, and, and to, you know, to, to, to Tony's question, uh. The modern density, modern density is defined in the zoning codes. And, and it's also defined in the comp plan. And modern density in the comp plan, uh, is, is up to twenty four dwelling units per acre. Low density in the comp plan is, is up to six dwellings per acre. And if you also read the zoning codes, six dwelling units per acre comes out magically to seven thousand, approximately seven thousand two hundred square feet. Per lot, which is what the, the, uh, was what the, uh, R one. Uh, code says is the minimum sized lot that any re. Replant can be built to. Seven thousand two hundred is a fixed number in our existing zoning code. So another thing that I discovered is I manipulated the maps. If you do the math on median density, which would be R two, three, four, five. Uh, and eight.
Oh.
Uh, because it's, it's, no, two, three, four, two, three, four, five, so it's five, six plex through two plex. If you, if you use the existing numbers in the zoning code. And figure out how many dwelling units that you can put on an acre. They all come out magically to twenty, approximately twenty dwelling units per acre. And so when I first read, uh, uh, about the size. The, was, was the right term. When I first read in, in, in the, in the zoning code, the density that the. You know, allowed densities. And in one place, it says that a duplex needs eight thousand square feet of land. And then if you put a duplex into a five plex zone, it needs around numbers, two thousand square feet of land. And I said, how can that be? And the answer is if you do the math on all of those, uh, then, then they all come out to about twenty lot, twenty dwelling units per acre. And I need to define a dwelling unit is the space inside a building of a single family who is in. So duplex has, is one dwelling structure, but it's two dwelling units. A triplex is one dwelling structure, but it's three dwelling units. And, and so I think that understanding that distinction is important.
And the division number specifies of the minimum size of those dwelling units.
Exactly. And, and as Greg just pointed out, and I can pull that chart up if it's useful. Does anybody have any questions or comments on what I talked about so far?
Well, I've got a comment based on the map that's what Marlene said. Based on the new information on homeless shelters. That, and, and we really did want to collapse.
Right.
We may have to come up with another density and move out those places where homeless shelters can go.
Or when we write the code, we, we create, we create a, a, uh.
Well, we've got to do it in the complex.
Yes.
And, and now it's come up with that. Could be an issue if we want to collapse. Two through.
Exactly. And, and, and Dan, I, 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 I absolutely agree with you. And Marvin, thank you for bringing that out because as I read the homeless code change, I didn't get that. That, that, uh, homeless shelters would be allowed. And hotel motel, I got that, but I didn't realize that was also allowed in five and six plex. Uh, and that's why I wanted to see that specific reference. Not that I doubt you, but I want to see it with my own eyes. Because then what Dan is saying, that what Marlene has already pointed, already pointed out. It doesn't make sense to lump a five plex into a duplex zone. And then open the door for a homeless shelter to be built in that neighborhood.
And, but I, I still do think our tip when we're doing the comp plan is to collapse.
Yes, I, I.
I have the new information, so not so many.
Oh, just, I'm trying to keep the running tally here, but. You know, that's a good example of something that we're going to have to wrestle with in phase two. So.
But we need to bring it up to council that in the comp plan, we need, that is, we, we have an issue.
We have a density issue, exactly. So, so then that triggers a second thought that I want to bring up. And this area, all of this, and I'll call that red. Uh, I, I have trouble with my eyes and. I've had a hard time focusing either here or there. Uh, but whatever this color is, this is the R six A. This is the R six B and this is your succeed. So these are, are recreation vehicles and trailers. These are, uh, mobile homes and these are double white manufactured homes. The zone says that you can put any manufactured home in any R one zone period. So is there any need to have an R six C zone? It's a question and I don't expect us to resolve it right now. It's a question.
Uh, your recommendation so far has been to combine all three of us.
And, and I'm, and I'm, I'm, I'm inviting further, uh, further analysis of that. That was my initial recommendation, but I'm not so sure that that's a good recommendation. This zone here is, is the, uh, mobile home. And according to MRSC, nobody makes mobile homes anymore. And any mobile home built earlier than nineteen seventy six can't be used. Mobile home or manufactured home built prior to nineteen seventy six cannot be used.
Actually, the code says you can't move one in that's over three years old.
I was looking for that and as I asked Marlene, I would like you to show me that reference just so that I can nail it down. It's not that I doubt you. I just, I just want to nail it down. Because all of the times that I've read the code, I haven't seen that and I went looking for it yesterday. Uh.
I think it was, where I read it was under, I don't remember what the reference was, the number reference, but it was under.
Um, manufactured mobile home zoning. I looked there and I didn't see it. But I also confess that sometimes, you know, it's like in a grocery store, if I'm looking for beans and I'm looking for a green can. And that's a mini yellow can, I don't see it. Uh, and, and so that.
I, I might have read it from, you know, uh.
It, it read it from another city, but.
Richard?
Yes.
Um, you, you were talking about the, uh. I won't say mobile homes. You're talking about manufactured homes and why we might not need one of the designations. I think it's possible that when they're going in R ones, uh, they have some pretty stiff rules. And as you know, we all sat there and made up, uh, some building standards that all homes needed to follow. That city council hasn't, uh, ruled on yet. But in that designated area you referred to about possibly eliminating, I don't think any of those standards would be necessary. Nor maybe would they have, uh, the need for a concrete foundation. Maybe it's skirting. That they can get away with in that different zone, things like that.
That's a, that's a good comment, but the zoning regulation says that manufactured homes have to be put on a concrete foundation.
Even if they're in that other, uh, location.
Yes. And, and, and the, the zoning regulations, and I can pull them up on screen relatively easy. The zoning regulations also, uh, also say that any stated use. And that, that all of these other zones, that any standard use in the R one, they can also be used. I'm saying this backwards. Uh, um, so I think that doing away with this zone and just making this R one residential. Makes perfect sense to me, but I think that it's a future discussion, but I want to put the, the, the bug in your ear. Uh, uh, you know, to, to, as you're looking and reading this code, to look at that. And then I think that all of these, uh, uh, mobile homes. As Mr. Ogenonis, I don't know if I say that right, just pointed out that whatever's there is there until it burns down. Uh, and so any changes we make don't actually affect this. But I think that leaving this zone, the, um, uh, the recreational vehicles and trailers. I think leaving that zone as it is makes sense because it protects these lots in perpetuity. And according to the county GIS map, these lots on average are about two thousand square feet. And these lots are of the same size as R one lots, around seven thousand or eight thousand square feet.
We also have a new, a new, uh. I can't say vehicle, but a new home today called a park model. And I don't know if they would try to put that into the same category as a, uh, manufactured home. But I, I feel that as long as it's in this northern section there, that they should have lesser requirements than they would if they were in an R one.
The, the, the park home is a manufactured home by definition. And, and it does not fit the, the, uh, density requirements. That Greg was just talking about. Give me just a second here.
Yeah, because they're only probably in the four hundred square foot area.
Right.
We just need to be, uh, you know, as, as the buzzword of the day is affordable housing. I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to, to allow that. And I, I still see the possibility of a manufactured home, even if council passed our recommendations for building standards. That those same building standards in R one would not be necessary in the northern, uh, zones.
Correct. What I, what I'm calling to, give me just a second here. Oh, I'm wrong, I'm from the wrong guy.
So, Rich, I'm trying to record this. You're saying that the, uh. Well, I've heard a couple of things. One, that the, you, the universal building design codes would not apply to. R six A and.
I want to be careful with our wording. We, we, the planning commission came up with building standards that we wanted to push towards council to approve. In R one areas.
Right.
And I feel that those rules, those building standards should not apply. In those, uh, some of those appropriate northern, uh, parts of the city.
Right. And there was something else.
Well, I, I had mentioned, uh, he just said that all manufactured homes require a concrete foundation of some type. Uh, it's, it's been known in the past that some of those buildings would have skirting rather than a typical concrete foundation. That saves expense for people.
Okay, this is the chart that I was looking for. This is the chart that Greg was referring to. Uh, and this tells you the division number and if you look at the zoning map, each division is clearly marked in the, in the zoning map. Uh, and Marshall, you understand this chart better than I do, but if you're in any of these divisions, then the minimum square foot footprint of your dwelling has to be that. Or that, or, or whatever. Uh, and, and this is where, uh, this is how the park home would be regulated.
They could go only in division twelve.
Exactly.
Exactly, right.
Our homes can, even though they're less than six hundred.
Excluding trailers and mobile homes.
And the park model is an extension of a trailer.
It's an RV.
Eleanor, I can, I can send this to you. You don't have to photograph it.
So there is no size on, on the whole homes. No minimum size of mobile ones.
There is, just not in division twelve.
That's what I'm looking at. So in division twelve, there is.
And you can end up with a tear drop as opposed to, uh, a double white, okay? Um, I don't, I don't know that I've run across any regulations to this point that, that would, uh. That, that talked about limiting the size of a trailer that you would enter.
I, I have read and reread and read again, uh, times three. Uh, and I don't see a limitation on the, on the, on the size of a park home. Uh, but it brings up an interesting thought. And if we look at the intent of neighborhood commercial, which is kind of neighborhood center. One of the ideas proposed in the comp plan is that it would allow smaller dwelling units and smaller lot sizes. And if we were to adopt that, uh, uh, that idea, this chart may need to be updated. And I think that it would follow the, uh, the, the pattern of the old Bay development. Uh, and the old Bay development went through some extensive research and, and modeling to come up with what they've come up with. Uh, I read, you know, had they, um, developed a plan. Uh, um. And there's sixty pages of legalese, uh, but the actual lot size and structure size. Uh, is with a little bit of patience, I think can be, can be pulled out of there. So that's another thing for us to think about as we're making recommendations to the city council about allowing. Uh, um, uh, be smaller, you know, what do they call them? Um, micro, that's not the word I want, let's see what I want.
Tiny homes is what tiny homes.
And, and in a conversation with Marshall, uh, uh, that. Correct me if I'm wrong here, Marshall, but, but you have a developer who has pointed out that there is a market for these smaller homes. Because they are more affordable. And, and where in the city would we want to? To, with the city, want to locate tiny homes. Um, and, and I agree with a comment that I remember Eleanor making weeks or months ago. Uh, I'm not sure I want a tiny home right next door to me, but I, I'm perfectly aligned with there being a section of the city. And it's probably down in the undeveloped, relatively undeveloped said zone. That that's maybe the most logical place. If you look down on the south into the city, uh, yes, as we get closer to the breakwater. Those houses, according to this chart, these are all thousand square foot waterfront homes.
Richard, oh, go ahead, I'll just, I, I think tiny homes could be the answer to affordable houses.
Absolutely.
And I, I think to create an area. Um, where there's not large enough, uh, plot of land. To make a tiny home village somewhat like Oyut would be great.
Eleanor, I absolutely agree with you. And as I have examined the maps. Uh, and it's instructive to look at the, the, the Grace Harbor GIS map. Uh, and you can actually click on each plot and you can see who owns the plot, yada, yada, yada. But it's also instructive, uh, to look at the, at the Google Maps satellite image because it gives you a realistic view of what's. Right there right now. So an area that could potentially fit tiny homes. And it would fit into the neighborhood is Rich Harden's ten acres. Now, now, I, Rich, I'm not telling you how to use your ten acres. I'm just saying that, that, that area could potentially fit.
But, so you know, during, during this election, many people have told me how I should use my property. So you go right ahead.
And, and, and Rich, I'm not telling you how to use your property. I'm just saying, if, if, in, in the big scheme of things, that's an area that tiny homes might make sense. As well as that track A now, uh, uh, on the end of Point Brown, that, that, you know, timberland.
Yeah, but, and for the record, I will state what I always state. A person needs to live and die with the zoning that they have when they purchase their land.
Even though it's kind of turned into a state law.
I'm just saying, I, I knew when I bought that piece of land, I needed to live and die with the zoning that I bought it with, that I couldn't assume. That I would ever get any kind of a variance for any reason.
Okay, so two things. Number one, there's a confusion about tiny homes versus tiny homes on wheels. I want to make sure we're all talking about the same thing. Tiny homes on wheels are essentially an RV. Tiny homes would be something under this six hundred and fifty square feet. It would be on foundation and it would be sick built just like any other home.
Very fine.
So I want to make sure that we're clear about what we're referring to when we talk about tiny homes. The second thing I wanted to say was putting a tiny home village in a said zone does not jive with. Jive with increasing density and creating a commercial residential mixed use district. It creates a one story village of small homes, which is fine, but that doesn't jive with this vision for this. Vibrant community of the recreation and shopping and things like that.
And and Tanya, I I I absolutely agree with what you're saying, and I think that that's the best part of of our mission and Greg referred to the second phase. Is to say where in the city, uh, is the ideal place to put a tiny home village and.
When did we take on this task to decide where to put a tiny home village?
Well, it is kind of our task in that if we are going to to refine or edit the land use map. That that we need between us and city council, we need to kind of decide where that zone should be.
So the question is where would we allow increased density? And smaller footprint sizes, that's what the question is.
Okay, and and it's hard for me to.
Our task is to go through the red lines. How with any issues we have. And tiny homes hasn't been has never been on the plate.
Right, it's an affordable housing question, but we weren't specifically trying to answer that.
But affordable housing is in chapter five. I'm not sure we tackled with the. Where we can. What do you think?
Well, I, well, we already have tiny houses. Down in the set zone, uh, but they're associated with. You know, bed breakfasts. And even why don't you go back down the stuff then, um, you know, technically all of those. Oh, what's it called, uh? I wish you had your original map, but.
The Chuck Scumbers code and that area.
Yeah, all of those technically are tiny homes, but they're all associated with with the commercial enterprise.
Yeah.
And, um. You know, we're getting into the the to more broad topic about. Uh, exactly what does neighborhood center, neighborhood commercial? As described in the comp plan mean? And it goes on to say it is like Ojat Bay. And Ojat Bay, when you look at the planned development zone, existing of the zoning permits for planning development. It does allow a much denser density.
Right.
Uh, and it also facilitates the kind of uh, vision that Tanya shared about. Uh, single, multi mix with retail and, you know, the basic idea is that. You're not asking people that live there to necessarily have to drive all the way to the north end of town to to deal with the business because. There's some groceries and there's some other things there, at least that's the way I read the complex. And, um. You're right, tiny home villages has never really come up. And the whole issue about affordable housing, I will argue. Uh, based on my read of chapter three, four, or five, is addressed clearly. And indicate that. I mean, it says it three or multiple times in the comp plan. That the only way out of of affordable housing is through some form of government subsidy. Section eight is a statewide program and that's one that's what's referenced in the the comp plan. I'll argue that that certainly we want to accommodate. Uh, people who are are challenged, but I will also argue that the last thing I want to do with those insurers. Is making a magnet for low income. Just make it one, I don't think that's, uh, that's necessarily. A goal or objective that's that's in the health plan.
And and Greg, again, I hear you, and Marshall, you you turn and then I have a comment, I agree with you.
Okay, so here's an issue that I'm dealing with currently on on my plate and that is, um. This table that we just dealt with, there was a a previous interpretation of code that allowed for, um. And you guys talked about it in your. In in your discussion about duplexes and triplexes and stuff like that with subdivision, saying the entire building is a structure. And then each individual unit is the dwelling unit. Um, we just recently, um, discovered that a dwelling unit. Uh, when you have a duplex, the previous interpretation was that duplex was one structure. And the minimum density would be six hundred and fifty feet for that structure. Well, if you look at the definition of a building. The building is identified, um, when you start talking about duplexes, triplexes and the the multi block structures. When you divide a building with a wall that separates living quarters, um. Side by side with no, no passage through that, like a firewall or a C M block wall or whatever. Then each one of those units.
Yes.
Yeah. So that's a common wall subdivision and and we've got several of them that have been done, uh, or we've just recently had, um. Conditional use permits issued for three of those types of dwellings where they can individually subdivide that lot. And its respective unit into a in the triplex situation, three separate parcels and sell them individually to different property owners. And the, uh, so yeah, in a tri- in a triplex.
You get three different owners of a triplex?
Absolutely, yeah, it's the common wall. It's the common wall subdivision, uh, provisions in the code.
Is it good?
I, well, I'm I'm seeing that in discussions with one of the developers who's, um, putting these triplexes for. And I think there's about three of them now that, um, based on the interpretation that I'm going to write hopefully this week, uh, that portion of the code. There'll be nonconforming sizes. That said, there seems to be a demand for a five hundred square foot unit. And that doesn't meet the minimum six fifty, uh, that's that's required by code. And so we we need to entertain without calling them small, uh, tiny homes. Um, which is seems to be a kind of makes people print sharing over some shores if you if you want to refer to something as a tiny home. But these five hundred square foot dwelling units. Um, as the developer found out when he advertised to rent these things out, it was like standing room only. It was kids moving out of their parents' house for the first time, I don't know what he, I can't remember what he said he was renting them for, it was either a thousand dollars or less. Maybe he said he was seven fifty per unit. And it's a five hundred square foot unit. Um, he has widows and widowers who are downsizing from a large family home that they shared as a couple. Now, one of them wants to rent and, uh, and get down to something that's less maintenance. Um, our local grocery store and. And motel workers and stuff like that are standing in line trying to get into these units and so there's. There's a demand for that small, maybe a single person living by themselves, they don't need a house or or anything. And quite frankly, I think when you say tiny homes. Um, the impression I get when I see it on the news is it's not much cheaper than a single family residence. Um, they kind of play that that concept up. Um, so. It's probably something that that the planning commission is wanting, gonna want to talk about in that table. Not for the single family, so that table, um. When when you talk about multiple structures, um, the table, if we're going to modify. Minimum square footages, I think it should apply, should apply to anything but the or or exempt the single family residential zone. From any modification to those, um, minimum square footages. Well, I I. Let me ask a question, yes. So they've got fifteen hundred square feet. Yes. And our minimum size is six hundred and fifty per unit. Right, there was a previous interpretation that said the entire structure was the minimum square footage, so he had, um, fifteen hundred square feet in his overall triplex. And so he was able to divide those into three five hundred foot dwelling units.
He, I'm struggling a little bit with it too.
Yeah, I guess my. My question is, it can't cost that much more to add another hundred and fifty square feet. That was my comment, um, and. And the scale of economy, I guess there's there's just enough to it in that, um, the trust, the trust lengths and sizes. You're adding another, um. You know, so many yards of concrete foundation. I mean, there is some construction costs that go up, but you, I think we're, does anybody know what our constructed cost now is for residential structures, are we over a hundred dollars a square foot now?
I think so.
Oh, shoot, you're you're going for over two hundred bucks a square foot, you're probably two and a quarter.
Okay, so so two hundred dollars a square foot, you know, you're looking at a. A chunk of change to upsize from a thousand or five hundred to six fifty.
So it's.
Not not a lot, not.
Yeah, you're 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 an extra thirty to forty grand to do what you just talked about.
Yeah. And that's about the number that I came up with.
Yeah.
I still don't get how that approved, you're saying there's an actual code in in.
Well, you gotta look, you gotta look at three different definitions to the get to get to know.
Um, but there's actual code that that makes an exception for the division. Chart that we just looked at.
Because the structure meets the minimum size requirement.
Well, so this, and let me call it.
The code for the division numbers are for dwelling unit, not.
Well, that's that's where the misinterpretation occurred and these five hundred square foot dwelling units were allowed.
Sounds like something that needs to be fixed, well, that's that's my goal for the week is to.
Define dwelling versus building.
And and you have to, quite frankly, we stumbled across it because I was working on trying to determine whether it was, uh, allowed by code to cite multiply. Multiple structures, multiple principal use structures on a single lot. And I have a piece of code that says that is allowed.
I I remember reading that.
So you can, you can build two duplex structures on a single parcel. Uh, provided that there's enough land area per unit as defined in the density requirements. Uh, for each of those units. Furthermore, most of those zones allow for a common wall subdivision of those units, so you could take two duplexes. Provided that you, under under my interpretation, meet the minimum six hundred and fifty square foot per dwelling unit. Divide those duplexes into four separate parcels. Uh, selling each one individually. I'm working through the process.
By the way, you can sell those individuals.
Yeah, it's it's part of our conditional use of the zoning regulations.
So it isn't that this is just a spur of the thought, but isn't that kind of the concept, United condo?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's very simple, yeah.
Well, thank you.
I mean, that was that that was way more into weeds than I wanted to get on now, but yeah, um. But it just needs to be considered and I don't think that there's a a lot of movement in minimum square footage, I think when you get down to a certain size. Then the building code starts, um, making it impossible. Cause you have to have a minimum square footage for a bedroom, for a living room, kitchen, those kind of things. At some point, when you get under five hundred square feet, the building code will cut it off, as you can't go any smaller than this.
Good to hear there's some rules. Well, okay, um.
You have anything else?
No, I I was gonna ask, does does anybody have any questions that that I can try to clarify? And realize that that this pink line that I have identified as a potential said zone. That that was my guess based on some other conversations, but what I did try to have, you know, add in here is is just, you know, what what's this one, oh. Each each lot, these smugglers codes, each of those losses zero point one two acres. Uh, I mean, so so anyway, does anybody else have any comments on anything on here that I can try to clarify?
I do.
Yes.
I struggled over this too, because unfortunately, the comp plan is not very clear about. One, it completely ignores mapping the neighborhood, uh, commercial. And again, they were hurt, commercial equals neighborhood center equals Ojat Bay in terms of concept. And so when I struggled with this, I finally came down to recommending and that's what I've written up before, it's it's just a proposal. But what I ultimately recommended is that in essence, it only applies to the existing B one, B two. Uh, in the South End and the only exception to that was. The Marina has a different designation, but it's not B three. And so I limited our our focus on B one, existing B one, B two. And whatever the Marina is currently called. And basically, the recommendation was just slap the the plan development. Uh, code on that and make the Marina area B three.
But I think the Marina, I I can pull up the zoning map.
I just forgot and I.
I think that the Marina is.
Might be B three, B M R, but I don't think it's zoned that way.
This, this is the zoning map.
The division.
This, yeah, this the division map and zoning map are the same thing.
No, they're not. Well, I guess they can become on it, yeah, you're right. So what's the light green mean? I mean, it is, it's.
It's either B one or B two.
Yeah, it's B one, B two, so all of it's B one or B two, and so my recommendation for the South End. Was that for all practical purposes, we're not gonna change the single family, we're not gonna change the multifamily. And that's the only other thing that's down there and it's like, let's get practical about it and say, B one and B two is the only area. That, um. The the intent of the South End Development Zone actually fits.
I I think that I hear what you're saying and I thought that I just wanted to. A a point that I wanted to make is in the cop plan, the cop plan defines, uh, the what we're calling the said zone, the cop plan doesn't use said zone. The cop plan says Point Brown from Parkland. Um, basically, south and, uh, south and west, uh, and so when I took the liberty to kind of draw that, 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 uh. Line out here, uh, I was looking at these multi use areas and saying, does it make sense to? Include those in, but that.
Well, you and I struggled over this, I mean, we talked about this an awful lot and I don't know what the right answer is, I'm just saying that. I'm suggesting, I'm recommending that we, once we get into this, that, um. The practical solution is simply focus our attention on what's B one and B two down there and not try to to put additional code on top of existing R one. And existing multifamily. Uh, because we're really not, I mean, there's nothing in the comp plan that talks about us changing, um. The the residential areas down there, we're talking about creating. Uh, mixed use residential, again, along the lines of what. Uh, Tanya had recommended where we do have a lot looser standards, we don't really get into trying to force everybody into single family or multifamily. We. Permit conceptually the mix of those along with. The idea of retail, commercial, or commercial neighborhoods. So I look, my, I just process it that way, I don't know that's the right answer, but that's what I had proposed and you've offered a different way of looking at it. But ultimately, we gotta get down to writing. Uh, in case two, what does neighborhood cent- uh, center, neighborhood, commercial? Dash Ojat Bay mean for? What we've tagged South End Development Zone, which I am, I'm not married to that label either, it's just a convenient way of of allowing us to talk. So yeah, do you, are you, are you proposing, uh, ultimately with the map that you just showed, that? We need to modify the code for R one in the South End and Development Zone.
I I think there's a lot of code that needs to be modified and that's this for R one. I I think a lot of the of the zoning counts need to be modified and and.
It's not really answering my question.
Because because I I I had to wrap my head around the question. Uh, and so I can't give you an answer now that you're gonna hold my feet to the fire next week, because I don't know that answer. I I.
I'll find that next week.
The 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 point I want to make right now is is this is a document that I created and I I have not shared this document. And I'm wondering if this document is useful to the rest of you, I can send it to Dan and Dan can share, this is a document I talked about. Uh, and what I did is I took the definition modern density out of the cop plan. And the cop plan says, this is a quote, residential medium density, the land use designation allows a maximum density of twenty four dwellings. And the cop plan says, this is a quote, residential medium density, the land use designation allows a maximum density of twenty-four dwelling units per acre. That's what the, that's what the draft cop plan says. And now under the ocean shores municipal code, there's a couple of codes that can apply to that. And then one of the things that I did in there is, is I did the calculations based on the numbers, the density regulations provided in the code. And that's where I told you this comes out to, in this case, you can put twenty-one point six dwelling units. But the point I want to make is this document takes the existing cop plan, the draft cop plan. It quotes that and then underneath that, it's my best estimate of the applicable zoning codes that would apply to that, that could be modified to fit the cop plan. And that's the answer to your question.
I'd like to see, please send me that. I think you've done some really good work.
No, and.
But I don't know that it requires a lot, it doesn't address the intent of the South End Development Zone. That's my point.
And, and, and.
Okay, I think we're getting off track.
But, and, and that's what I want to say is, is that I, if we, if, 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 if we share this document, I share this document, I give it to Dan and Dan shares it. This is not for next session's discussion. This is the prime to pump for phase two discussion. But if you read it and have, I know when I read things, sometimes I have to read it two or three times before I actually really broke as a rough handleman, where I actually can, can grasp what, you know, the intent of what I'm reading. So there's a lot of information here and it's a starting point. It's not my suggestion for what we should do. It's a starting point of the zone, of the codes that I think deserve to be closer with that and potentially edited.
Good work.
So, so, and, and again, I want to, I want to close what I'm going to say and, and bring this back around full circle. Our mission for the next planning session is to come back with, with, with our comments on these city council line item edits. And, and whether, and I see it as just a simple vote, yes, no, we agree with her or we disagree with. And Sarah, you can send me a word version of this.
Not today.
Not, yeah. I'm tired. Literally, I have spent five, ten hours a day on this for three, for, for, for at least six weeks, at least six weeks.
I've been working with you.
So I'm done, thank you.
Anybody have any comments on whatever we're going? Greg, you're not going to be here.
I'm not going to be here. I will give you my comments. I'll do my homework before I leave for Texas and you can carry on.
Okay. Okay, you're not going to be able to.
You know, from a practical standpoint, I don't think so. I mean, I'm trying to take care of my dad and it's. Yeah, I, I'll do my homework. I'll finish.
Okay, that was perfect. Okay. I'm so glad you're back. She's the note taker for the next week. Before you do that to Eleanor. Rich, skip the turn. Your, your turn.
Yeah, I, I think I've got to, to be, since Sarah rescued me, since I rescued Pat. Technically, it's Pat's turn.
Eleanor's volunteered to.
Okay.
That motion is heard.
Before we adjourn, I want to thank Sarah and the mayor for their clarification. Because that's the whole skin on, on what we're doing. I certify for you and I appreciate the clarity.
All right. Before we go, I would like to say that Tanya has performed beyond what I hoped and has been an absolutely wonderful team member.
You're here.
We appreciate everything you've done.
I feel free to come back and visit when I want.
So also, you're going to have, I need my chair.